And everything you say must be nice. Not that there will be anything else.
Brooke, can I take this one over the box? And then afford to do it next time? Oh, finished. All right. All the same order. The stands for flag. Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible and veritable. Okay. And here I was trying to read, read and read some more. Okay. Also want to read our mission statement in partnership with communities. Mission of the Delaware County Public School District is to educate individuals in an environment of trust and respect so they become self-directed, responsible life long learners. Okay. We have a motion, we have roll call here. So we have all board members except Nicole present. Joining us is our new superintendent Shannon Husted. So welcome for special meeting. And for all those watching, we're going to have Brooke Falcone from the district office. She's going to be taking notes for us and hopefully in assault with that. So we'll go ahead and we'll adopt the agenda. Do we make changes to the agenda?
The only thing on the agenda, if you looked at your, and I got it, so you know this, but I'm new here. So just, yeah. So I'm not sure how you guys, you passed practice with your superintendent report. I had Brooke help me because my memory stick is what it is. So you can see that I have some additional things other than, sorry, G. I have a few others. So, you know, I don't know if you need to add them. I guess what I'm saying, the rest of the agenda is the way it is.
Okay. Yeah.
So I'm not sure how you guys like to operate that.
Um, I mean, I, I think if we're going to put, you know, if you want to put down what you're going to talk about, I think that's wonderful to add to the meeting minutes. Are we all good with that? I mean, I'm sure you're not going to take whatever you probably detail with the topic. You don't really need them anywhere you can watch it, so.
Yeah. So, so you mean you want me to share that one?
Yeah, yeah.
So H is going to be fees, which is an action item later. So we'll talk about that. I is going to be, I have a meeting confirmed meeting, so just an update on how that went today. J is next. There you go. I also had a meeting with the teacher group, the mentor program today at nine o'clock. So just want to give you an update on that. And then the last one, which is ever after J, H and J K. Is I turned to the career academy last night. So just want to give you an update on all of them.
No, I think this is good because now people can see what you're talking about.
Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you. All right. We have a motion to approve the agenda. So motion by Amy is our second. Second by Laura. All those in favor say aye. Close. Motion carries. Reminder six zero today. Public comments. Anybody talking today? Nope. No comments this evening. Our recognition. Well, this year we had a state tournament with the 12 U girls this weekend. So that was a lot of fun to see the girls. They did well. They got second place, battled their way back in. Long night. They didn't go until midnight, but they sure had fun. So fun to see those softball kids. And I'm sure baseball and rainbow.
Yeah, the nine U team needed to win the state. They won the state championship or?
Their tier. Yeah, their tier.
Their tier.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Awesome. Great.
Yeah, some good work on those, some slow guys.
Very fun.
We had a shooter from the DGF trap team that went to nationals in Michigan and he finished 198 out of 1700 shooters. So congratulations to Dawson Spear on that one.
Dawson Spear. Awesome. When was that held? Just recently?
Just this last weekend.
Okay. Oh, that's cool. That trap team, I can hear him shooting from my house, so. So, oh, wonderful. All right. Any other recognition? Okay, 6.1 board committee reports and a policy has a report to give. So Brittany and Amy, you can fill us in.
We met last Thursday with Shannon, including Nicole. She's not here this evening. I did send communication out to the full board. I didn't get any calls. Did you, Brittany?
No.
Regarding, so just for the public and being transparent, the policy will remain the same as what it is on the school district website presently, which will give Shannon a little flexibility. Hopefully with this upcoming year, it might be a little cozy at some spots, but we're going to do the best we can over the next year.
And the policy?
The open end roll. Five oh nine point two, I'm sorry. Amy, can you apply?
No, that's pretty simple.
Can I add on this?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, perfect. So, yeah, thank you very much. It was a great meeting and I really appreciated them reaching out to me to have that before here. The other thing that was on the docket was 509.1, which I couldn't, we couldn't really discuss because I didn't have the dollar amount from the state to set our tuition. I did get that done and so we did share it with you tonight. And that was just based, that's a hard number that we give to the state and that's the new hard number. So you'll see that if 509.1 is here, we, Brooke helped me update that today. But yeah, the other part was what it is.
Any other board committees? Meeting, anything else? All right. 6.2 superintendent reports. So Laura, you're.
Here we go. So again, Brooks, I asked Brooke here, I want Brooke here at least July, maybe in August. I have a past practice that I like because I know who I am and I don't remember everything. School boards have different clerks at different times. If it ever changes, then all of a sudden you get a different note taker and they're not used to doing it. In this case, Amy, I think you're going to find us nothing on that. It's just, the other thing is tomorrow is another day at work for me. I know where Brooke's going to be and I know where I'm going to be. So we can discuss the board meeting if there's any action that I need to take. Hey, I need to get on this right away and get going. Brooke, do you remember last night, what was it that Amy said? What did David say? And it's just really important for me not to miss anything. And I think sometimes there's a disconnect if you don't have your person with you. I am working out with her what we're going to do with her time and her hours. If she can come in late, she can come do, I don't know. We're going to figure out that because to me, and this is just me being selfish, I need her here. And if that changes, then her and I are going to talk about that. About, okay, I don't need to hear, I've got a new planner and here's what we're doing. So I just want to say that first. So thank you, Brooke.
So that'll be your personal minutes, basically, whatever, whatever information. That's not going to be public information, right? I mean, compared to the minutes that we take.
Okay, so here's.
Just important to clarify that, yes.
Yep. So, so here's how my past practice has been with my board. Is I have somebody who's taking notes and I have the clerk still taking notes. They could, and so then my person, so my business manager slash secretary slash whatever, sent the minutes out. She conferred with the clerk first to make sure, Amy, how do these look? They look good? Yep, boom, now they go up. So those two would connect after the meeting. And it might be the next day, it might be the day after, depending on how that meeting goes and how quick she can get back with Amy. They can kind of stamp it. Yep, it's good. So then Brooke can send it up. That's how I've done it in the past. I'd like it to be that way, but it'll never bypass Amy because Amy's a clerk and she has to have proven also. Before it'd be shared out for you guys to observe. Does that make sense? Amy, are you good with that? Brooke, is that, okay? Two I's are better than one. This case is kind of three, so I have some memory in here, but I'm talking and having to go through things tonight. Just, Brooke, I need to know what happened and what did I say again? So anyway, okay. Perfect. So thank you, Amy. So I still would like you to take the notes.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, perfect. Construction update. And so you got to bear with me. I've talked to a lot of people and I can't remember what I've said to you and what I haven't said to you. And so I also didn't give you an update on Friday, so I apologize. I'm trying to catch it up here, so. The Glendon site, the cafeteria will not be open right away. That was pretty much confirmed last week that it just won't be. So I've talked to Chelsea. We're going to serve the hot meal still as our plan for today. Just they'll have to be disposables because there's no dishwasher. Right away, they said the projection is two weeks to a month, month being the absolute worst case scenario. So want to make sure that gets out there. I've talked to Chelsea already and she's starting to think about what it's going to look like. We're going to be able to keep the same menu. Wayne and Margot are working on the logistics of how and where those kids are going to eat. Again, we're hoping for two weeks, but anyway. And then it'll be opened up after that and kids can have the commons and that rotation with the normal kitchen because the water will be back up. So that, that's kind of a significant deal. Doors, it's going pretty good on schedule. There's a couple snap foods that I found last week. We knocked them out yesterday, I'm sorry, last Thursday in the job shack. And so it's going to be, we got a plan to fix some things. So, yeah. So overall, okay. Got some questions and things that we had to work through with GLG and with Comstock, but more to come on that. It's going, did you guys have any questions about the construction? Or is this not that time? I'm sorry.
No, Stephanie has any. So Shannon will be attending.
Every voice meeting.
Yeah. Yep. Every meeting and Tracy's there, so she's here for sort of years during that meeting. So that'll be good. And I mean, it's just fun to see lots of movement outside and things that are happening, so.
Yeah, a lot of good discussion behind closed doors too. They're, they're feeling pretty good actually.
Yeah. Perfect.
And you're assuming you're going to send an update you said to us on Friday.
Friday, so before I leave Friday, I want to send you guys an update. And I just didn't do it Friday and I just.
I mean, that would include anything you found on the construction then too.
Yeah, I'm going to try to have a little bit, yeah, a little bit on everything, I guess. And I'm just trying to figure out, put that little bit on everything. I don't want to write a board, but anyway, here we go. The meal plan, so that was the next thing on my list is that meal plan for Glendon site. I think I've already touched these on that. Legislative update. We did get, we got little spreadsheets with what the E12 bill and the impact it should have on our school district, 2.4, 45%. Increase the general ed for year one and then year two, a 2%. So a total package of about 870 some thousand dollars for the district over those two years. There are other monies too that are not just general fund. That's general fund. So I will get more of the specifics on the other fund funding sources over the next week or so, so I can start to go, okay, that's us, that's not us, that, you know, disparity aids and so on. So compensatory is another one that's tied to free and reduced lunch. That number is down. The whole state that's down because we're offering free lunches. So nobody's filling out the forms, you know, fill out the forms, you're compensatory. So they're trying to do some whole, whole harmless. So we can't lose out. So I just have to see that number, make sure Giants would pass. In any case, it was, it was good for districts. The percentage that we got, because that is not, that's not typical for the state to give 2.45 and two. We're lucky to get two and two. So that part is good, but we got some challenges here with budget. And you guys know the goal that you set for policy 714 is for 110%. So we will work on. District leading calendar, that's the thing. It's all colorful and rainbowish and blah 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 for you guys. I just want you, so if you can look at the top, these are when admin meetings are. This is not perfect. This is a work in progress right now. Board meetings and then the other ones, you can see there's a little tag next to the board meetings. So that's the night that the red bonus policy and the gold bonus budget. I'd like to have those groups meet on those nights following the board meeting. There are times where you don't need to meet. And so I have no agenda for policy because there's no policy to review. Or there's no whatever, so we won't have a meeting. So that tag is just saying that one's earmarked for that group. And if we don't need it, we don't need it, but we have a time then scheduled. So if we do, we have. You'll also notice, and then tonight, following this meeting, we have a fiscal and personnel committee meeting. There is where I'd like to address splitting the fiscal and the personnel to a budget and to a personnel and have two different. So if you look, I also gave you guys a current and revised current board list. I'd like us to look at that. This does not have to happen ever, or it can happen soon, or it can happen at January's reconfiguration or restructuring meeting. I just want you to look at it. I want to talk again specifically with the group tonight because that's a group I'd like to split. I'll tell you why. Doesn't mean it has to be there. You guys are the board members, you get to tell me. And then the personnel group is the one that does the negotiating. So your personnel, you're negotiating. Why? That's personnel. I'd like to switch operations to facilities. I'd say if we want to be transparent, we want to be trusted. If I came here right away and said, what do you do in operations? I think that's the one that, well, for facilities, guess what you're going to talk about? Facilities. Budget, what are you going to talk about? The budget. Personnel, obviously personnel, and that's already there. So that's kind of the way I like to operate. You can see these, the revised, I'd like you to take a look at it, think about it. We can talk about it more next, the next meeting and so on. So it's just for you guys to kind of look at a calendar of what I'm thinking. It has me and it won't be me. Please help me in that, that it won't be me being the chair of these groups. I want a plank, a board member to chair each of those committees, not me. So right now I was on top. So Brooke was very nice and made me the chair for everyone, but that's something for sure that we want to change and have them remember. So please take a look at that and we can talk about more of that, more about that in the weeks to come. Da da da, board meetings, that's on there too. H was fees. So this is an action coming up. The one thing I wanted to talk about before it becomes an action item. This guy coming right here, I believe you guys had this one. Hopefully, maybe you did. The green. And so this is that no surprises, no hidden agendas, no nothing. Joe came and was talking with Brooke and we talked about fees and changing fees and what should they be changed to and why. The green ones are things that will be changed. This is a first reading. I know this in the action item later. Because I want you to look at it, process it, talk about it. And then next meeting, we can talk about having a second reading and approving. You also should, no, did they get this one? This is one that I had Joe put together for me too, showing the area schools. And here's what they're, so when you take this home and you're just so excited to read some fees, you can compare it to what other districts are doing in our area and how do we align with those? And so should we adopt these changes or not? So that gives you guys two weeks to have a discussion. Get back to me, Joe, ask the questions you need to ask and then we'll go from there. Okay? So that's, I just want to make sure that I kind of explain it a little bit so when we have our action item later, you understand that that's just the first reading. That's not a final thing, so.
Okay, Shannon.
Yeah.
The 2021 local activity fees under Breckenridge. What is, what does the handwritten note say under arts and musical?
Oh, the note's category two. Help me out with that, Brooke. Right, it's cat two. So category two in high school league, you know, that's the fine arts, that's all that stuff. So what? Look, can I ask for clarification? Remember what Joe said on that about it's a cat two, but is it, is it the 50 down below? You have an arrow there too. And I don't want to put you on the spot though.
For DGF, it will be the 50.
It'll be 50 and I think it's represented on this sheet. So, so Breckenridge, I'm going to say is probably zero based on what I see on this. They do not charge for arts neither. And for arts, it's category two and it will be charged at $50. So, yeah. Great question. How am I going to find my little rabbit trail here? H, I, I did meet, I did meet with the teachers union group. We did a meeting confer today. Great discussion with them. They will be reporting the 26th meeting about what we talked about and that. And so again, just want to make sure you guys know. I knew the meeting confirmed the past. I really appreciate Kayla sending an email to you Wednesday after we met. We had our meeting greet next last week and they sent you an email. So I just really appreciate that from them. And I appreciate how we're off to, I think, a real good start. Anyway, I wanted to say that. I also met with the mentor group because I canceled that meeting in June, which tweaked a few people. I just didn't know anything about it. I wanted to wait. I met with them this morning. They shared their input. My meeting with the admin team tomorrow morning. We're going to start to kind of meld the mentor programs together. I told them not to do any planning until I get back to them next week. So there'll be more coming on our mentor program next week and the budget and what it'll look like.
What is, what is the mentor program?
So we have senior teachers that help or, so it's one of two things. They're a brand new teacher, just in general, it's their first job. So how do you turn on the lights? How do you get, do your grades? How do you, just any support that they need, which could be a lot, right? Or the other one is it's a new teacher to DGF. Probably taught somewhere else. Now they're coming here, it's like, oh, you get you synergy. How do I use that? How do I do my grade book? Where's the bathroom? Where's the coffee? Where's the? So, yeah, so they're a mentor, they're assigned to a mentee, I guess, in this case, a teacher. They support them and do whatever needs that. So, yeah. Did I stop it, Jay? Oh, yeah, career pattern. And so I did true that last Friday. Josh egg, I really appreciate it. It was Thursday. I said, Wayne, I got to see this book. And so he texts Josh and, and Josh and I know each other from previous work. So he said, yeah, I'll see you tomorrow. Fantastic building. It's beautiful. It's going to be good for kids. We just have to figure out our fit and what that looks like. And our registrations were not good. So if you have a high school student, you know that it got resent out. So we can see if we can get more kids to sign up. So I'll have more to report in July on the 26th. But just need to find our fits though. And, and so we'll see as we move forward. It is a phenomenal building. You guys got to see it, so you know, too. It's got to have, it's going to have a lot of opportunity for kids, but yeah. Too early to tell exactly what that impact will be, so. I think that's it, isn't it?
Perfect.
There you go.
Anybody to make questions for Shannon?
I have a couple. When you toured the career academy, was there any talk about when David and I would be able to be in on any sort of reading of that? But this has not happened yet.
Fantastic. No. It needs to happen. I still have not connected with Brandon about it too. And I guess I would like to meet with Brandon first and then I need to get you guys, because I just want to hear what he's doing, how it's working, what my thought is. And then we need to get you guys in there, so. This is why I have somebody taking notes for me today because then we'll go through tomorrow and then I won't. Yeah. Right, Brooke? Awesome. No, Laura, that's a great question and we need to get something and I need to get something because I haven't even sat down yet, so. Other than I got to see the bill.
That's pretty much all we.
Yeah. Hey, good, we're on the same page. We're way back on the same page.
That's great. Oh, yeah, you found that name.
Oh, okay. I should have called you.
And then I have one other question.
Yeah.
With the breakouts of the different, like splitting up personnel and fiscal, since you were going to meet with F and P tonight, since I am now on personnel, am I staying then?
Uh, no, that's the revised. So we're not going to go to that yet because I'm not, you guys have to approve that. This just so revised, I guess we could say, reckon, or my recommendation, but that doesn't mean it's going to be approved. So, yeah, good question, but no, you don't have to be there.
Yeah, after we have fiscal personnel tonight, I'll send an update. I'll tell everybody kind of what the discussion was. So don't reply, but just so everybody knows what's kind of transparent.
Yeah, I should say this because this is the, this is the most important piece of this whole calendar. Is that we're going to meet after board meetings. Because you're out, we have this captive audience and I won't let you out. But we have you here, so instead of wasting another night for you, we're going to keep you here and we're going to meet after so we can have discussion. So for the next two weeks, you guys can muddle it through and figure out and ask questions and figure out what do we like, don't like. I don't understand that. Why are you saying that? So when we come to our next board meeting, you've got two weeks to figure it out, ask questions. So when we come here, we are all on the same page anyway. Whatever we vote, we vote. We at least have an understanding. So that's vital to the meeting schedule.
Sounds good. All right. 7.1 approval of our June 28th meeting. Do you have a motion?
So move.
Motion by David, is there a second? Second by Laura. All those in favor say aye. Close. Motion carries. Consent agenda. Put our claims and accounts, Laura.
287,620 dollars in 98 cents.
Oh my gosh, we have no resignations, no donations, no anything. I don't think in four years, I don't think.
I do have a question.
Yeah.
Does anybody know that one bill on there, what that 25,000 for boiler piping is? I didn't, didn't look like it was under the construction bands to like magneal plumbing or something like that. It said piping for boiler or something like that. That's 25,000 and some hundreds that.
I don't understand that.
Under magneal plumbing, M A G N E L L or something like that.
Was it on there, Brooke? I went through it today and I just, I'm sorry.
It was on the Capitol, but wait. I kind of, I mean, I'm not 100% sure on this, but there was that one point in time when maintenance was going through redoing a bunch of pipes that was separate and even prior to.
Now, I didn't know if this was just repair, you know, on us or if it's part of the building project or what it was. I don't think it was coded to the building.
Here's what I will do. I will find out right away in the morning, Ronnie, and I'll let everybody know. I'll find out exactly what that is right away in the morning. I, I'm sorry, I did not, there was quite a few questions I had that I went through. Brooke did and got answers, but that was an award set on my part, so. I'll let, I'll let you guys know in the morning, for sure.
We want to, how should we do that with this part of approving the?
Did you feel like you needed clarification before you can go or not? That's.
No, I don't know. I just, just, I was just trying to remember the codes and what, where it was at and what it fit under, so.
Yeah, I'm trying, I'm trying to find, what was the name of it?
Magneal or something, M A G N E L L, I think, plumbing or something like that. Somewhere in the middle is 25,000 and some dollars.
Oh, right, magneal plumbing now, right there. Water piping boiler.
That's okay. Don't let it say it. No, I got it. 25,700 bucks. Water piping boiler.
Does it say what the code is on it or?
Yeah, the code is obviously general fund, yeah. Out of the general fund, so it didn't come on the fund six. So it's general fund. So it must be updates to the boiler, I'm guessing, at both sites. 25,000 is a pretty significant number.
Yeah, absolutely.
So my boiler experience up north is, we had to do some significant stuff to that and it was 11 grand for a smaller one. So I'm assuming it's boiler updates, but I.
Somebody must have approved it, right?
It must have been before my time, so.
I do remember stacking about boilers at some time and it was probably maybe in this past winter. But that's a great question.
The one with the invoice, you know, like the date on it, when was it done? Does, do anybody know this? Do you know, Brooke, at all, when it was done?
I mean, I don't.
Okay.
Very detailed, though, the invoices.
Very detailed, okay.
All right. Do we want to just go ahead and do it and take that off for the next?
How long do we have to pay them if we have to?
It's usually 30 days, isn't it? When did you guys get that usually?
I know we were, I want to be explosive with these right now.
Okay.
Maybe we're patchy and paying it anyway.
Lastly, I guess, I don't know. I, I never signed a voice, I never, you know, did approve it, but I also, I got to check on it. I can definitely do that, so. Another beautiful thing with transition. Can talk to you guys. You guys get to decide if you want to table. I can find out tomorrow morning, my way, and I'll get it back to you if you want.
Ronnie, what have you guys done in the past? Have you ever done, pulled a bill out?
Well, I think we have, but I don't know the details of it, and when it was signed for and all of this stuff, and what their timelines were, and when they were supposed to have been paid and.
Well, I mean.
I'm assuming the work is obviously done, right?
Yeah. What's your number, Laura, everybody?
I'm comfortable.
Comfortable?
We'll leave it in. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right. Anybody have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Any other further discussion?
I will. I don't know.
Okay, then we'll find out and email us tomorrow.
Yep.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, 9.1, 2021, 22 fees. This is the first reading, as Shannon said. Everything in green. This is a change. Just to the public knowledge, as far as meals, that's something that is set at a federal level. That is nothing the school district has any choice in the matter of. Our snack program is not changing. This is a program that we run in the, we're always an activity, but we feel like it's a benefit to our younger students to have a snack every day. For example, you can see that cost is going up for that. Activities and admission, season passes are going up $5, but single games are staying the same. So the Golden Age Pass is still going to be staying at the 62 years of age. Meal reinforcement mileage, all the same. Substitutes, that's staying the same. Early childhood transportation costs are going up, but I'm assuming that has to do with fuel cost.
The substitute, we are getting rid of the $200 a month. Yeah, no, that's okay. So to just kind of clarify some of that, that's, the yellow is something that I'm not settled on. And so you can see that is yours. I don't know what yours, I have. So subpay, we're looking at full day, half day possibilities too, just to clean up the district office as far as paying that. I'm used to a half day, full day, and I can explain that in the future, but instead of the hourly rate, it's, it's just a little bit of a nightmare, and it's easier to go half days, and it's easier to get a commitment from a sub if you offer them a half a day. And then we have things that we can have them do if the sub is only needed for two hours. The third hour, here's what you're going to do, is, you know, we're going, we can use those people. So instead of coming here for an hour, that was worth less for 18 bucks, a nickel's thing. So we're working on what that's going to be. The other, other one on there is that $200 a day. There are some subs and whatnot, and I understood the concept of it. The problem with it, in my opinion, and again, this is going to be a board decision, is that it's just another thing. We have a system. You sell for 15 days at this rate, whatever that might be, it might be 140, 130, whatever, we end up deciding there. And then after 15 days, you go into the DA1, and you get, that's your pay. That's consistent throughout the state of Minnesota. I'd like it to stay that way. Did the $200 a day have a purpose? Yeah, it did. So I get it. I, I wouldn't mark it up as a COVID situation. We needed to have subs, and the district saved a few pennies on that. The district, or the person made a little bit more on that. But it also depends on how long you want to turn stuff. There's a threshold, right? So if I'm a sub, and I'm going to be here for three months, I want the other way, the way that I'm talking about. And if they're here all the time, it's a nickel and dime, and I want to get rid of the nickels and dimes, and let's just have a system. So it's cleaner for the, for the business office. It's cleaner for everybody, so that I go, "Wait a second. Lindsay, are you on the $200 plan? We'll put Amy's on the 15 days and stop. Let's just do one, and let's make sure it makes sense." That's just my suggestion, so we'll get into that in the future.
Just activities, athletics, you can see, just stay on athletes, just a little more for each meal. And then event workers, supervisors, that all stick the same. Activity boost is the same. And then just fees going up by $5. And we haven't went up on our fees now. It's been two years. So like Shannon said, yeah, Joe put together this and kind of seeing what these other school districts are bringing together. And every time I look at something like this, I always go to like Holly in Martinsville and Brett, like who's next, like closest to us and seeing what they're doing. And, you know, we are, we are below that, and, you know, I'm glad that we may be portable, but we also run some of these programs in the rep, so. Something to consider. I don't think Laura was lying with interest in them at all. All right, do we have a motion?
I just.
Yeah.
And this is something that I brought up a few meetings ago, and I, Brian said he was going to look into it, but I didn't hear back. So with the breakfast and lunches being free, is, are, is milk still going to, would that be a paid thing if they're just getting milk? Because that's how it was this past year, and, you know, Brian doesn't.
I'll tell you this. I don't know right off the top of my head. I know that we're changing the program, the federal program that we're going to be a part of, or not. Okay, I should stop. I haven't talked to people here. I can only talk about where it was, and I think the whole state is going into the new summer program. If, anyway, I need to look at that for sure. And it changes the requirements, and so where does milk fall in that requirement? It's, as you guys know, the Obama stuff, and you had to serve certain things, and then you couldn't do this, you couldn't do that, and that was a program. My understanding with this new free program, they're shifting to the summer program. Again, I need to go back and read here, so to make sure I'm doing this correctly here, but with that being said, with the changes, I believe milk may change. So I will find that out for sure, and find out where we're going with that. It's the summer something program. Why am I blanking out? Is SSB, but anyway, it's changing.
No, I know you don't.
No, it's fine.
A lot of those things.
No, it's okay. No, it's a great question, Laura. That's, I don't know, milk is always treated differently in beds. It's always treated differently in everything else, and, you know.
Great question.
It is.
First reading, so we can go ahead and move forward, and then we'll have the answer by the second one, and if not, we'll table it and do it in August. So do the motion. So motion by Amy, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Good. Any more questions or discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 9.2, this is motion with the designation of Brock Anderson Squares and Waddlesburg, PA, Minneapolis, Minnesota's official school district council for the 21, 22 school year. Is there a motion? Motion by David. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Amy. Any questions or discussion?
Are you comfortable with this firm tour since they have been, or?
Well, I guess it's one of those things. I have a lot of moving parts, and I thought we'd let's just leave them alone. I, I have one of their phone numbers from Brian, so I, I haven't used it, and I hope to never use it, but I figured, just because they know our business, they might be just leaving them. I, I work with Knutson Flynn out of Minneapolis, and I have a good relationship with somebody there, but they don't know anything about yours, so that wouldn't make sense.
I think Brian took the, talked to Kevin Rowe.
Yeah, I got a Zach. Zach is another number, or the number I got too, so.
Yeah, that's which, so years ago when I was on him, it was Rapid, Roseac and.
Yeah, they're still at it. Yeah, they're out there too, so. Yeah, like I said, you know, no phone calls would be great.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 9.3, this is the first reading. The following policy is 509.1, 509.2, open the moderate process in our state tuition. Amy and Brittany give us an update on the policy meeting. The only thing that is changing is the formula allowance on 509.1, and that's in the yellow, so if you're ready to keep at that. Any other questions or discussion?
Isn't that basically the same amount as what your pupil aid is in the state?
It is.
More or less.
Yeah, and that's why the other day I didn't have it yet, because I didn't have the official number from the state. And so when I went through the new information that they shared out Friday, was it Thursday, Monday, or Friday, that I could update this. Yeah, that's what it is.
All right, real awesome. Someone's question, Brittany, is there a second? Second by Laura. Any further discussion?
Interesting. It's good, you know, that we did make those changes, make changes to policy at this time. Everything that's going on.
Yeah. I agree. I think I'm excited for next year, and I have to have this policy. All right. Well, that's okay. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 9.4, this is an honorable of confidential contract for Beth Brenner at the end of the 2020, 2021 school year. This is a big, just a shift in our healthcare. We are having two RNs to come. After COVID last year and everything we went through, we, we just have to have two RNs. We're obviously mandating, Shannon was part of this discussion. We thank Beth for her years of service, and sad to have to see it end this way, but it's just the way of healthcare, and we have to protect our kiddos. Unfortunately, working in healthcare, Amy and I can both say, it all comes down to a license. So. All right, do we have a motion? Motion by David. Is there a second? Second by Amy. Any further discussion or questions from Shannon?
Maybe this is the time to interject. I, I want to thank Beth, because it wasn't perfect, this process, and I did have a conversation with her, and I just want to say publicly that she handled it with a lot of greatest employees, and I really appreciate that. I do have some meetings coming forward, not necessarily specific to her, but there are some things here that we're going to, hopefully can just take care of it and do it right and do it better the next time. And so I just want to say thank you to Beth and how she's handled this difficult situation.
Thank you, Shannon. Which nurse was that blended, and which one's that dealer? Kayla will be indoor, and is that Rachel and Megan? Megan will be in blended. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 9.5, this is a bid approval for our climate control bid for Delaware Elementary in Blinden. This is something that we've talked about for several years, because we had, we have two different control systems. And we knew going into this construction project that this was something we were going to look at. Unfortunately, everything costs a bazillion dollars, which stinks, because it takes away a lot of things, but hopefully all falls in place and we get to where we need to go. So I'm going to let Shannon just fill us in. I know he's been in a few meetings and kind of answering questions everybody asks here.
Yeah, so we knew there was going to be a little bit of an increase, obviously, with the timing too, and it's a year later, and everything is a little out of line right now. But just so you know, out of the two bids, the other bid was $102,000 more than climate control. So it wasn't too difficult to pick climate control, but on the other hand, it was who we wanted anyway, so it worked out okay, because now we have one system in both schools. And now when I call somebody about their issues, it's climate control, and we can move forward with whatever billing it is or whatever. So I think that's very important, because, you know, you're going to pay upfront now, but I think it's one of those deals where over time, you're going to end up getting some of that back for sure, because of the efficiency of it, so.
I was, it's impressive for resume too and everything, with all of their buildings, you know, four different systems, coordinating all of that.
I agree.
They should be able to handle ours type of things, so.
Yeah, I was happy to read the same stuff on it because of their background and their history with other places. They've definitely dealt with this kind of material or this kind of system.
All right, do we have a motion? Ronnie, Ronnie, Amy, you want a second?
I'll second.
All right, any more questions or discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, next board meeting is going to be Monday, July 26. We're going to plan on here. I will email Brooke and Tracy and Shannon the Friday before to confirm if there's a change. Brooke will send it out to the district so they know if it changes, but we're just going to assume it's here, but we'll confirm to make sure now through construction, so everybody knows where they're going. And I will text you. And then Monday, after that meeting, it's planned on operations committee meeting. So the operation committee will stay the same for now. I don't think that changes or possibly changes the name of the facility. So more to come on that. We'll have a good discussion about that and bring that forward to the next board meeting, so. All right, anything else anybody needs to add? All right, we'll take a five-minute break, and then Ronnie, David, and all, and F and P. So thank you, everybody. We are. Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Ronnie, I expect you on the next one. Then you can get up for this next one.
Yep.
Yep, yep.